Good evening and welcome to a town hall meeting with Republican Presidential Candidate, Ron Paul. I'm Kent Snyder, and we are broadcasting live from Manchester, New Hampshire. Soon after this program tonight, Fox News will host a forum for the Republican candidates. However, Fox News did not invite Dr. Paul, even though Dr. Paul received 10 percent of the vote in the recent Iowa caucuses, just three points behind John McCain and Fred Thompson, and six points ahead of Rudy Giuliani. In addition, Dr. Paul raised nearly $20 million this last quarter, likely more than any other Republican candidate. The purpose of this program is to give voters in New Hampshire and throughout the country an opportunity to learn more about Ron Paul and his campaign for president. Tonight's format, it is a town hall meeting, so most of the questions will come from our audience. I welcome them here tonight and thank them for their participation. Let's meet the candidate. Congressman Ron Paul is serving in his 10th term in the U.S. House. He's an OB-GYN who has delivered more than 4,000 babies. He grew up in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and graduated from Gettysburg College and Duke University School of Medicine. He served in the U.S. Air Force as a flight surgeon. Dr. Paul and his wife Carol celebrated 50 years of marriage last year. They have five children, 18 grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. Dr. Paul, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You've been campaigning for president for about a year now, Dr. Paul. Why do you want to be president, and what got you involved in politics in the beginning?
Well, it is a long story, but I'll give you the short version. I've been in politics since the '70s. I became interested in politics because of the economic conditions back at that time. In the 1970s, we were paying for guns and butter of the 1960s, and I had anticipated economic problems. They did come. There was a monetary disruption in 1971 with the breakdown of Bretton Woods Agreement, and I talked about economic issues, and I used politics as a forum. And yet, I did end up winning a seat. I served for four terms back in the '70s and the '80s, and then I went back to my medical practice and then came back to Congress later. And the decision about a year ago to run for this office came not as a burning desire for me to be the president as much as the encouragement from so many supporters who said this was time to hear this message. And my reluctance at that time was that I wasn't sure whether the country was really ready for a strict constitutionalist. I knew it was necessary, but I wasn't sure how the people would respond, because I understand that it's very important that people want change in order to have it. But I finally made the decision that I would seek this office, and yet, it's been one year, and I have been probably proven that I shouldn't have been skeptical about it, because I have found that so many people are anxious, the people are ready, and the young people are ready for this message. So I am very delighted to deliver this message, which is a strict constitutional approach to our government, personal liberty, and free markets, along with sound money, and also an economic foreign policy which is designed to protect our national security, but not to get so overly involved overseas. And this message is what I feel so emphatic about and so important to get out to the American people. And if it is to be, I will be the president, and I will deliver that message and pursue this as a president.
Thank you. You mentioned that voters seem to want change, and of course, the other candidates are talking about change as well. As president, what changes would you make once you were sworn in?
Well, the biggest changes a president could bring about quickly would be in foreign policy. And you're right, there's a lot of the other candidates that want change. For instance, they do talk about the foreign policy and the war going on over in the Middle East. But most of the time, what they're talking about is change, is they want a change of management style. They want to say, "Well, more troops here, more troops there, and I would do this, I would do that." But I'm not talking about that type of change. I'm talking about a more strategic, philosophic change, questioning whether or not we should be the policemen of the world, whether or not we should have an empire, whether or not we should be in 130 countries, whether or not we should have 700 bases around the world. And dealing also with the idea of how do we pay for this and what's happening to us. So I want significant changes, and the most important thing a president could do is change that. We could bring peace to the Middle East with a few significant changes. We don't need to be fighting wars that were unnecessary. And we went into the war in Iraq without a declaration of war. There were no weapons of mass destruction. There were no Al Qaeda in the region. There was no threat to our national security, and we all recognize this. And the others who claim they want change have dug their heels in, and their change is, "Why don't we just send more troops?" And then they're talking about, "What are we going to do in Pakistan, and we're also very much involved in Afghanistan," and it goes on and on. So that type of change is not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about change in foreign policy. A president has a lot of authority on foreign policy and movement of troops, and eventually, this is the only way we can work out of our financial mess, is starting to bring these troops home, spending that money here at home rather than overseas.
Okay. Thank you. We will go to questions from the audience in just a moment, but one other question for you, Dr. Paul, from me. Candidates, Republican and Democrat, have been talking about a so-called "strong America." What is your vision of a strong America, and how do we, as a nation, get there?
Well, sometimes, people, when they want to act strong, they overreact. I think somebody who is strong is self-confident, and they don't have to be bullying themselves around. Self-confidence is what we need. And when we go about the world and say that our strength is that we will tell other people what to do, I don't think that is a sense of strength. A sense of strength is a sense of confidence, that you can have a strong national fence, which we need and should have. The foreign policy we have today has actually weakened us, and we want a strong national fence, but we also want a foreign policy that is designed, that shows cooperation with people, not antagonism, not threatening people. So far, we've had so few choices in our foreign policy, not just with this administration, but with many administrations. We have a choice of either threatening people with sanctions and bombs, or then we turn around and we finally find somebody that we put in charge of a country, and we support some dictator, say like a Musharraf, then we give him money. And my idea is, there's a third option, and that is be friends with people. They're going to be imperfect, but we're imperfect. A strong country will be working to improve ourselves, or us as individuals, or ourselves as a country, and then set an example for the world. That's my idea of strength and confidence, because I am very confident about what the American people stand for and what our country stands for. We have a great constitution. We have great traditions and freedom. We once knew what a free-market economy was about. We once knew what sound money was all about, and we have lost that confidence, and that is what we have to have our strength in, strengthen the confidence that freedom really works. And when we do that, then we don't have to be pushing ourselves. I think it's insecurity makes people push too hard and say, "Be like us and do it," or "We'll threaten you." It's quite a bit different. It is strength in self-confidence and belief in our system of government.
Okay. Thank you. This is a town hall meeting, so we'll begin with this gentleman right in the back there, please. Here's a microphone right there, sir. Go ahead and stand.
Congressman Paul. Why should I be voting for you instead of a more mainstream conservative candidate such as Mitt Romney or Mike Huckabee?
Well, I would say the most important reason is that I'm a fiscal conservative, and I have a record for that. Others talk about it. Everybody's a fiscal conservative when they're running in the Republican primary. And, you know, when the young people come and join the campaign, and others, when they hear about my candidacy, maybe on one of the earlier debates, they would go to the website and say, and look at the platform and see the consistency of it. But many of them then would go to the congressional website and say, "Wow, he even voted that way." And he even voted that way even if he had to vote by himself. So it was that consistency and the defense of the Constitution which has gained so much momentum force and so much support. So it's the consistency in the message and acting out that way in the past, and sticking to the principles and the promises that I have made. Now, the other candidates like Mike Huckabee and Mitt Romney, they've had their experiences. I mean, Mike Huckabee, I mean, if you look at his record, he's a big taxer, you know, and he has to sort of quiet that, but for a Republican primary, you ought to know about that, that he's a big taxer. And then, I think Mitt Romney's record has been rehashed many, many times in all the debates, you know, his challenge on where he was when he was running for the Senate and then for the governorship, and what his position was on right-to-life, and what it was on immigration, and, "Well, I changed this, I changed this." I think they are seen as flip-floppers, and if they look at my record, I think people can see, he's stuck by his guns. And if you look back, there's appearing now some videos. Do you know that YouTube video? Boy picks up a lot of stuff. And then, and every once in a while, they pick some of those old videos up, and I sort of wish, "I hope they don't show all of those." But no, but, you know, they do pick up the videos, and they show them speeches I might have given 20 years ago on the Federal Reserve, or different interviews on TV, and they'll come and say, "You said exactly the same thing 20 years ago." So I think that is the difference, that people want somebody to keep their promises, they're consistent, and above all else, and I've talked about this so much, is a clear understanding of the Constitution, no lip service to the Constitution, a clear understanding and obedience to the Constitution.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Paul. Thank you for joining us today. My question is really two parts. One, the nation continuously runs very large trade deficits with quote-unquote "trading partners," such as Mexico and China and a lot of the Pacific Rim. What is a president, would you propose to do with that, if anything? The other question is, you keep talking about a strong dollar and a dollar that's rooted in something other than what we have today, and I was wondering if you could just explain a little more clearly, since we're not in a 30-second soundbite, and let us know exactly where you're coming from on that.
Okay, and actually, your two questions are interrelated, because it is the dollar system that helps hurt our trade imbalance. And we have a tremendous imbalance. Right now, for us to finance our extravagance, our consumption, our military operation, requires that we borrow over $800 billion every year. That's how much we spend and consume over and above what we produce. So literally, we could, and at times, it looks like we might be held hostage by our banker. And the tragedy of all this, the mess that we have in our economy, is our banker now has become China, Saudi Arabia, and Japan. And it has come across, because of the monetary system, something that motivated me to run for Congress many years ago, and the idea that we don't have anything backing our currency. Because of the Bretton Woods Agreement, the dollar was supposed to be as good as gold, and everybody trusted the dollar. The dollar became the reserve currency of the world. Instead of holding gold in the bank, they held dollars, and we were supposed to protect the value of the world currency. Well, that broke down in the 1970s. And then, what happened was, there was a threat to the dollar. We recovered from that in 1979 by having interest rates of 21 percent and restoring confidence. But somehow or another, the world was willing to accept this idea that the dollar was as good as gold. So we had the privilege of printing gold. And the gold standard, you can't print it, and you have to back off, you don't have any money. Like, if you and I spent too much, there was a limit to how much we could spend, and countries had a limit. But this bizarre system came about, where we were allowed to print as much money as we want, and the world was willing to take it. So our chief export became our dollars. So the jobs followed our dollars. And then, of course, we added to the mess by overtaxing and overregulating, and all of a sudden, we were no longer competitive. And we had more inflation here. We were printing all these dollars, and because of the inflation, it was difficult to keep up with the price of labor and all the commodities, and this is all getting worse. You can't solve that problem until we live within our means. And we have to yield to this temptation to just keep borrowing. The country borrows as a whole, our government borrows, we're deeply in debt, but we, as individuals, have done the same thing. The American people have $900 billion of credit debt, but that goes along with the debt in the banking system and in the financial markets, as well as our country. You can't solve that problem until you deal with the currency itself. And this is the reason I talk about the Federal Reserve a lot, and why we have to have a backing to the currency, we have to have the dollar convertible into something. This is what the founders knew and understood because of the runaway inflation of the continental dollar, and they said, "No more printing money, no more emitting bills of credit," is what they talked about. The Constitution still says that, "Only gold and silver can be legal tender." We, as a nation, cannot solve these problems until we restrain the paper machine. Now, what they would like to do is discredit me and others and you that would believe this and say, "What do you want to do, go back to the gold standard?" Well, the question should be, is where did you get this notion that if you come up when you need money, you just print it? I mean, that's the silliness of it all. They have to defend that position. So unless you deal with that and the tax system and the overregulation, we are going to have difficulty. And then they came in, and they started having some of these trade agreements which were supposed to adjust it. You know, the NAFTA and the CAFDA and the WTO, and it was all designed to have free and prosperous trade. They have served the interests of big corporations, and it hasn't been that fair, and it hasn't been that free-market oriented, it has served this special interest. So a lot has gone wrong, but you have to adjust all those events in order to get back. If we don't do the adjustment, what will happen is the dollar will keep going down, the dollar's on the rocks right now. People are starting to take notice. All of a sudden, the dollar is worth less than the Canadian dollar. So people are starting to realize that there's something special going on, and it's not insignificant. So the questions you ask have to be dealt with. One person can't do it. It needs the Congress. We need to change the law. We need to talk about monetary policy and change our tax code. But if we don't do it, we'll have a serious, serious problem, but that is exactly what we have to address.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Paul, you talked about the economy here with that gentleman's question. In today's Times in London, published in London, the headline said, "Living standards outstrip those across the Atlantic for the first time in over a century." That was in today's Times paper in London. The first paragraph, "Living standards in Britain are set to rise above those in America for the first time since the 19th century," according to a report by the respected Oxford Economics Consultancy. Your reaction to this?
This is exactly what we could predict would happen. We've been living on borrowed money and borrowed time. The world finally got sick and tired of holding too many dollars and are dumping dollars. That means our cost of living is going up. Salaries may creep up a little bit. Wages might go up, you know, and profits may go up, but it will never keep up. And people's standard of living is going down. And this is why even people under Social Security are suffering even with their 2% increases, because our government deceives us by saying, "Oh, there's no inflation." Like, there's only 2% inflation, but yet, cost of living for the elderly, those on fixed income, are, you know, having inflation about 8 or 10%. And then we have this monetary system that goes and tells people who want to save money. Saving is very important in a capitalist society. That's where capital comes from, not from the Federal Reserve system. So people who do try and save, if there are elderly that don't want to gamble on the stock market, which I don't blame them, and they start saving their money, and the Federal Reserve comes in and say, "Well, you're only going to get 2% or 3% or 4% on your savings." They can't keep up. And a characteristic of the destruction of a currency is the middle class gets wiped out. And look at the Third World nations of the world. In Central America, even in Mexico, there's a small middle class, and this is what we're talking about today, and they're talking about this, our middle class being hurt. Low-middle-income and middle class really get hurt, and in the early stages before there's real chaos, guess what? There's certain classes of people get wealthier. There's a transfer of wealth from the poor to the wealthy, and here, just recently, and at the end of the year, we had $38 billion of bonuses for companies on Wall Street. And I have no problems with companies that make money legitimately, without government contracts, and without milking the inflationary system. But the $38 billion is not part of free enterprise. It's very distorted. You have to suspect there's something wrong. When companies go bankrupt, or they get in deep trouble, and they have to fire their CEO, and he gets a $300 million bonus for putting him out of office, there's something awfully strange going on. But that has a lot to do with the monetary policy, overtaxes, overregulation, our production going down, our productive jobs are overseas, we are not producing the wealth. We are being drained, and it is related to our foreign policy, because we still spend a lot of money, but we're spending a trillion dollars a year to maintain our empire around the world. And just think, if you're doing that much, what if that money had been spent at home? What about all this money we spend in Germany, and Japan, and Korea? That money should be spent here at home, and then our standard of living would rise again.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Paul. I have two questions for you. One is a comment on something that John McCain recently said, that he doesn't care if we're going to be in Iraq for another 100 years. I am an American that really wants us out of Iraq, and I think people are looking for an answer, and yet I look at Obama wanting to leave the permanent bases in Iraq, and it seems like a disconnect, and I'd like your comments on those two.
You know, there are three issues here about whether we should accept Senator McCain's proposition that we should stay for 100 years. One is moral, one is constitutional, and the other is economics. And I'll start with the moral issue. By what right should one generation commit the next generation to perpetual war and perpetual policing of the world? There's no right for our generation to sign a treaty with any country in the world to say, "No matter what happens in the future, we're going to go to war automatically." That treaty is unconstitutional. You can't amend the Constitution through a treaty. You only go to war with a declaration of war. So this idea that we should stay, if you stay there with troops, that means you're in defense of land, and you're always susceptible to war. So we can't do that. We can't promise the next generation, or obligate the next generation, to be there physically and potentially killed in an operation like that. Constitutionally, you can't do it. There's no authority for us to be the policemen of the world. And the idea, the notion, that somebody believes that you can make a plan for staying 100 years, and I think he followed up with a justification, "So what? We've been in Korea for 60. Yeah, so what? We've been in Korea for 60 years. That's a good reason we need to quit, if you care about these economic problems that But the reason I am absolutely sure that we'll win this argument is the economic issue. I hope everybody would, I wished everybody would go back to the Constitution and deal with the moral issue, but the practical economic issue is the one that will determine the limitation of this. And this is what has happened so often through history. The limitation comes from the inability to finance the empire. We can't afford it anymore. The Soviet system, they were a threat to us. I was drafted and served five years in the '60s when they had missiles in Cuba, and we didn't have to fight Russia or the Soviets. It finally collapsed internally. And this is what happens to big empires, great empires, and they finally self-destruct for economic reasons. So the economic reasons will call this to a halt. The question is, do you wait until you have a financial crisis, a crash of the dollar, and people much poorer than they are today, or wise up and look and say, "What does the Constitution tell us? What was the advice of the founders? What did the Republican Party used to stand for? We used to stand for ending wars. That's what we were elected to do with both Nixon and Eisenhower. We weren't elected to start wars. We were elected to end wars. So should we wait until we have the crisis, or should we deal with it now? Save the money and work a transition." So those who want to stay, and they moderate their tone and say, "I guess the most radical notion was to say we would stay for 100 years." But the others, you know, the Democrats were elected last fall, they were supposed to slow this effort up with the war, and yet they've all continued to endorse it, continued to finance it, continued to promote the authority, and they don't really look at the bottom line and say that we should reassess our values. Made a mistake, own up to it. But to continue to make a mistake so to save face makes no sense whatsoever. We don't need to wait for an economic calamity to occur. We need to just do what is right.
Thank you. Dr. Paul, you have a reputation in Congress, and especially in your district, to support and defend veterans, and also to address the POW/MIA question. Would you comment on that, please?
Yes, you know, I mentioned I was drafted in the '60s. Fortunately, we don't have a draft, but we still have selective service. But in the time I was in the Air Force, I did a lot of flight physicals as a flight surgeon for many individuals that went to Korea, went to Vietnam, and often thought about how many went and didn't come back, and what are the tragedies of Vietnam, and then we finally left. And yet, after we left Vietnam, we were told there would be a catastrophe there, and communism would sweep the southeast, and yet, we ended up achieving in peace what we couldn't achieve in war. The French and the Americans were telling the Vietnamese what to do for over 20 years, telling them how to live. Finally, we leave. Finally, we leave, and we come home, and all of a sudden, they have become more westernized. We talk to them, we trade with them, their president comes over here, and we invest over there. And yet, when we left, under those dire circumstances, you know, there's over 2,000 unexposed, we don't know where 2,000 of our men are. And so often, when they draft us and send us over and fight these wars, veterans are forgotten about when they come home. You know, we fought after Vietnam, and they said, "Oh, there's no such things as Agent Orange," and we fought, and we finally got attention. After the Persian Gulf War, no Persian Gulf War syndrome, and believe me, they're already lined up. Hundreds of thousands are lined up right now at the veterans' offices, waiting for disability. And sometimes, they're vague and difficult, and symptoms, and we have post-traumatic stress syndrome, which is very real, but sometimes, people don't want to admit it and come in, and there are more head injuries than ever before. I mean, it is just a tragedy. We didn't pay enough attention when the men came home and to really look for them. The one thing I promise, if I am to be the president, I will never let any stones unturned to go and see what we can do to find if any men or women were left anyplace in the world. But let me just add, and likewise, as we spend too much money overseas and in other areas, we do have a financial, moral, and a constitutional obligation to take care of our men when they come home, and we do not do a good job in taking care of our veterans. We should and must do a lot better.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Paul, what should the U.S. role be in the Arab-Israeli conflict?
Now, that's a good question, because it's been, that argument's been going on ever since Israel became a country under a mandate from the United Nations after World War II. I think the United States' role should be friendship with all countries. Israel, we should be friends, we should trade, and we should travel back and forth and share ideas, but we shouldn't be subsidizing Israel. But we shouldn't be subsidizing Israel's enemies either. You know, sometimes you say, "Oh, I don't vote for foreign aid for Israel." Oh, that means you must be anti-Semitic, because you don't vote for foreign aid. But if you think about that, if you don't like foreign aid, and if you don't want foreign aid to go to Israel, you shouldn't want foreign aid to go to Israel's enemy. And guess what? The Arab countries get three times as much aid as Israel gets. So it really helps Israel not to be for foreign aid. And I, my argument is that Israel should be a sovereign nation, and they lose out by becoming dependent on us, just as anybody, when they become dependent on a government, they lose their own sovereignty. Because we don't allow them to do what they want in foreign policy. If they want to defend borders, we might instruct them. If they want to deal with the Arab League or have peace treaties, we're always involved. There would be so much greater incentive for peace in that region of the world, and there are many Israelis who agree with this idea and would work and talk with. You know, the Labor Party in Israel say and do things that if you send them over here, you know, you get called all kinds of nasty names. But there would be a greater incentive. There could have been a much greater incentive if we had done nothing after the invasion of Kuwait. That was not our fight, but it was Israel's fight, it was close by, and none of the other Arab nations wanted Saddam Hussein in Kuwait. The natural thing that would have come about if it would have been a decision in the region is the Arab nations, along with Israel, probably would have gotten together, taken Saddam Hussein out, but we might have avoided all this conflict that we have had so far. Did you have a follow-up on that?
No, I'm just wondering why we don't, the public don't have this information. I mean, this is news to me. I'm happy to hear it, by the way.
Well, maybe some benefits will come from this public forum tonight. Thank you.
Sir, please. Microphone's right there.
If other parties in the United Nations, I assume even though you said we should be out of the U.N., you would still appoint an ambassador to it. If they tried to organize Security Council action, as we have done to other countries, would you block it, or would you step back and let them do their thing?
If we were still in the United Nations, you're talking about? And you're talking about a sanction against another nation? Right. Yes, we should object to that. I mean, if all the Arab nations got together as they have in the past, we should develop a neutral tone to it. We shouldn't be using the United Nations. But likewise, if the United Nations, see, the United Nations does not have an authority to go to war. They're strict adherents to their own rules. But you know, what was the very first thing that they did a short time after they were organized? They gave the mandate to get involved in the Korean War. I mean, that wasn't a peace mission, that was a war mission, and of course, Truman took us to war without a declaration. So if there are these mandates, especially with troops and sanctions, sanctions are an act of war. So yes, we, as a powerful country, have put a lot of pressure on the U.N., because we give them so much money, we think we own it, and we tell them what to do, and we want to put sanctions against Iran. That just aggravates the problem. So I wouldn't want to do it ourselves, and if others are doing it, I would object.
Dr. Paul, I understand a good friend of yours came in from Arizona, he and his wife, Barry Goldwater Jr., to campaign with you and your family, and I'd like to ask Mr. Goldwater if he would explain to the audience why he supports Dr. Paul. Mr. Goldwater? The microphone right there.
Well, that's pretty easy. I live in Arizona, Phoenix, Arizona, and about some 40 years ago, I was here in New Hampshire campaigning for my father when he ran for President of the United States. We're trying to figure out who won that race. I think it was Henry Cavill Lodge on a write-in, if you can figure that out. But I've been in Phoenix, listening to this great debate that's going on across the country with some of our fine Republican candidates, and I know them all. And I've been hearing all of them sort of say, well, I'm a Goldwater conservative. And I got a little tired of listening to that. I just had to come here and set the record straight. I've known Ron Paul now for many years. We served together in the House of Representatives. And if anyone is a spokesman for the Goldwater conservatism, it's Ron Paul. Ron has always been consistent for expanding individual liberty and curbing the concentration of power in the hands of some who think they know better how to spend our money. And so I think his message is important this year, in the dialogue, in the discussion, because it offers a contrast to what we're hearing from other candidates. So Ron, I'm real pleased to be here to support you and ask for the folks to get out, get you elected.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Goldwater. Next question, please, from the audience, right here, ma'am. Microphone right there.
What do you think of the idea of the separation of school and state? Do you think that would give more parents control over their children's education? And what do you think the education system in the United States would look like if public funds were taken out of the education system?
She asked, what would it be like, and what would be my position on the separation of school and state? And there is a movement in this country trying, you know, pick up the separation of church and state. Maybe we should think about separating school and state as well. I think it's a good goal, especially at the federal level. And that's the only thing I have dealt with as a congressman, and as a candidate, and as a president. And that is, what is the federal role in public schools? And I say it should be zero. There's no authority for that. The only way the federal government could get involved in schooling is through the tax code, not to issue vouchers. I don't like vouchers in that sense, but if you're a homeschooler or a private schooler, or if you're in public school and you're spending extra money to help your child, you ought to be able to get that money back with a tax credit. And I've introduced various pieces of legislation along that line. That would be one way that we could nibble away, until we get rid of the entire income tax, of course, but in the meantime, we'd get back for taking care of education. Now, I think the move that you're talking about actually makes the point of separating all state, even local state. Under the Constitution, the federal government neither has the authority to get involved to control schools nor to prohibit local communities. Local communities have been in public education for a long time, but the closer home, the better. When I went to public schools, it was only the local community, and schools were set up by their own towns, and you had a school board, and you didn't have to go any further. But today, you go regional schools, you go to the state boards, you go to the federal courts, you go to the Department of Education, and then we finally get somebody to run for office, like Ronald Reagan did, to get rid of the Department of Education. It didn't happen. And then now, we live under the conditions of the Republican Party, who not only doesn't aim, doesn't even set the goal of getting rid of the Department of Education, they expand it. We've literally, as Republicans, have more than doubled the size, giving us no child left behind. So those are the areas that the federal government could quickly do something about. We should get the federal government out of it if you want to move down to a lower level and get it back to parental control. Ultimately, the real control over medical care and education should be the responsibility of the individual and/or the parents. They are the ones who are supposed to be in charge of their children.
We'll get a microphone working over there, but before we go over there, search. Do you have a question? Yes. Microphone right there. Well, go ahead.
Hello, Dr. Paul. I actually have another question on education. I'm a senior in high school, and I'll be going to college next year, so I kind of have a lot of experience in the field of education. And I understand that you think that the states and the local government should be in control of the education, but as president, do you think there's anything that you can do to perhaps bring more diversity to our education? Maybe bring back some of the health education that seems to be lacking, but is so important in our new century? And maybe we should be teaching our kids more than the standard, like, why don't we learn anything besides world history? Why don't we learn anything besides U.S. history? Shouldn't we be teaching our kids to appreciate other cultures in the world?
Yes, and what you're describing, what you're describing is the problem of centralized control of education, because they don't talk about that. They're talking about, how are we going to pass the tests and no child left behind? And how are the teachers going to qualify? And are they watching what the courses are going to say? But those are the issues that should be done locally, you know, the curriculum. You might say, well, wouldn't it be good if the federal government improved the curriculum? I don't think so, because even though they might want to do the right thing, if they do the wrong thing, I don't want the federal government picking the textbooks and deciding what courses that they have. And every town and township, every community, might be a little bit different. But if they get way off on tangent, you only have to deal with the school board. But I think your concern is justified. It's just that if our goal is to get the government out of the way, we don't want to have these mandates from the federal government.
We have an overflow crowd, so I think we can work our way over here. Would you be willing to take a couple of minutes, explain who owns the Federal Reserve? And as president, would you boot them off our soil and abolish the IRS?
Those are certainly worthy goals. Getting rid of the Federal Reserve and the IRS. If we're going to follow the Constitution, I won't be able to write an executive order and do it in one day, but that is, that should certainly be the goal. But addressing the subject of who owns the Federal Reserve, who controls the monetary system, and what's behind it all. You know, the CIA is very secretive, and it's very difficult to find out what they're doing and what kind of trouble they're getting us into around the world, and what type of government they're overthrowing. But the truth is, is we can probably find out, as a member of Congress, a little bit more about the CIA than we can about the banking system. I mean, I've been on Financial Services and the Banking Committee ever since I was in Congress. From early on, I've always stayed on that committee, because I'm interested in monetary policy. But I can't get inside one of the Open Market Committee meetings of the Federal Reserve. That would not be permissible. I write laws, bills, hopefully it would be a law where we could audit the Federal Reserve and find out what they're really doing. I mean, this papulum that they give us about the minutes, that doesn't help us. It's the international agreements. And now we have something called the Presidential Working Committee on Financial Markets that was set up after the stock market crash in '87. And that's very, very secretive. And powerful people serve on that, and they can act to prop up markets for who knows whom, you know what they're doing. But the ownership is, the stock is owned by private bankers, and they get paid interest on this. But the control isn't by every member of the Federal Reserve system. The control is by a small number of people, the Federal Reserve Board, the, you know, the bank in New York is on the Open Market Committee, but they meet and they decide how much money they're going to be. They decide, well, let's create 10 billion, 20 billion, 30 billion. And they do that with a computer, and they buy Treasury bills. So when there's not enough people buying Treasury bills and interest rates start to go up, they buy these bills and pump money into the markets, because a lot of people like low interest rates. The bankers like low interest rates, but they like high interest rates when they loan the money to you. But they can borrow from the Federal Reserve. It's money out of thin air. So they, it's the secrecy of it all that is so bad. The ownership is by members of all the banks, and it is something that Congress created. The first central bank, National Bank, was created by Alexander Hamilton, and Jefferson got rid of it. The second one was gotten rid of by Andrew Jackson. And I'm just looking forward to be the president and get rid of the third national bank.
Dr. Paul, out of all the presidential candidates, Republican and Democrat, you're the only physician. Healthcare is certainly a pressing issue for most Americans. Would you comment what you would do, as your experience as a physician, once you become president?
Of course, this is one of the major issues of the campaign, and it took us about 35 to 40 years to get us into the mess that we have now. It's because government took it over. A lot of people think it's a consequence of the free market and doctors gouging and hospitals gouging, but it is, that is not the problem. It's mismanagement by corporations that got involved. It was designed that way. Today, the heavy lobbying in Washington for any medical policy changes come from the drug companies, the HMOs, the hospital administrators, and even the medical societies and AMA. They come in here, and there's always a special interest to protect. And what we've ended up doing is spending a lot more money on medicine. But instead of getting better quality care for more people, what happens is, when you inject more money, what you do is you push up prices, and it doesn't help. But where did the profits go? They went to the corporations. So the patients get less care, the doctors get less money, they complain about it all the time, and yet the middleman, which is an artificial creation, makes all these billions and billions of dollars of profits. So you have to reject this whole idea of managed care. Managed care came about because of the change in the laws in early 1907. The tax laws, the ARISA laws mandated that big corporations provide medical care for their workers, and then they would get the tax deduction. What they didn't do is provide an opportunity for small businessmen and individuals to be able to get the same benefits from it, and it caused an inequity. But on top of all this, you have the government mismanaging, pumping money into a certain industry. At the same time, we're still having inflation. That is, the value of the dollar goes down, so there's more inflation in medicine, because the government is involved. You have more inflation in education, or wherever the government gets involved, in housing, there's more inflation. But the government isn't involved in giving you a cellphone or a computer or television. So even with inflation, the destruction of the dollar, even under those conditions, those prices might even go down. But, and it's an amazing thing that we live in an age of technology, and there's every other industry, when you have technological advances, it drives prices down, it makes everybody more efficient, but not in medicine. They say, oh, there's too much technology, and we have to charge more and more. But this is because of the government involvement. What we have to do is get control of the dollars back into the hands of the patient, because the more we get, move toward more government, and it's already happened, you lose control. The government comes in and tells you that you have to go see this doctor before you can see this doctor. Very, very inefficient. And sometimes you can't even see the doctor that you want. Sometimes you want alternative care. You might want preventative health care. You might want nutritional medicine and other options, and you should have freedom of choice. In a free society, you have absolute freedom of choice, because it's your money. And this is the reason the most significant change that we can make is go toward giving you all your medical care dollars back off your taxes. You get the money back, you put it in an account. If you don't use it, you get to keep it. But then we should go back to the concept of insurance. We don't have insurance today. What we have is prepaid care, because if you go to the emergency room, and you don't have to pay or pay $5, you might, you know, some people might just abuse that, and they go to the emergency too much, and they push these charges up. You know, and there's a couple other areas that really hurt. You know, there's somebody on the television that's been advertising about, we have to destroy corporate, we have to deal with corporate greed, you know, and that's the reason we have all these problems. The corporations I don't like are the ones who make money off the taxpayers, you know, by contracts with the government. But that same individual happens to be running for presidency on the other side, he's the one that I just wonder whether, you know, trial lawyer greed ought to be involved as well. Because, you know, the medical malpractice issue is a real booster in costs, because in OBGYN, you know, you have to pay 30, 40, $50,000. You have to deliver a lot of babies just to pay for this insurance. And I've made some proposals on this, and that is, I would legalize contracts in the medical field. Today, I'm not allowed, as a physician, to contract with my patient and decide on who's going to maybe have a no-fault insurance policy. Say, if there's a bad outcome, we will go and we will buy this policy and maybe even share the cost, and they will take care of it. Now, lawyers would hate this, if you could settle it without them being in charge. We have all these lawsuits, which causes doctors to do so many things that they shouldn't be doing, because they're scared to death. It's sort of a bit of terrorism that goes on. And if you could do this, you know, the cost would come down. And I have a bill that would make that type of insurance policy deductible. But right now, today, it's illegal to have this contract. If you had a contract like that, there's an antitrust law that says doctors, that says that doctors can't do this. So once again, the government has gotten in the way, they got into department of management, and then regulating and controlling and telling you what you can do and can't do. And unfortunately, the momentum right now is against us. There's too many people, and some on our side as well. What we need is more government. I say we need a lot less government and more control in the hands of the patient.
We'll work the microphone back there. Is there another question while we're doing that on this side? Anyone else on this side? Yes, sir, right here, please? Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Paul, you're running some hard-hitting ads on immigration. Do your policy proposals in this area require expanded government power and expanded INS? How is this consistent with your overall philosophy?
Well, you know, I don't think the powers need to be expanded. As a matter of fact, there was a call for expanded powers dealing with illegal immigrants to issue these ID cards, which I indicated that, once you start issuing ID cards for somebody who might be illegal or look illegal, everybody would have to have it, you know, for civil liberties reason. And I'm very fearful of a national ID card, and that, to me, is not the solution to make everybody carry a card to prove, you know, our nationality. But no, I think there's adequate laws on the books. I think we should have more border guards, and we should have more security on our borders. We have border guards that are serving in Iraq. You know, I think we ought to bring them home, you know, and then use them on our own borders. But I have emphasized economics on this immigration problem. I think because the standard of living is going down for Americans that we talked about previously, a lot of people see this as a threat, and it is partially justifiable, because... previously, a lot of people see this as a threat, and it is partially justifiable, because we're hurting, the middle income is hurting, and if they go to the emergency room and have to wait in line, and they see somebody that they're pretty sure is illegal, that annoys them. If they think their school taxes are going up because they get free education, if they get food stamps, or if they qualify for Social Security, this annoys them. But I think it's, the aggravation really comes because of the concern about their own economic well-being. If we had a healthy, thriving economy, there would be a high demand for labor. But if we didn't have a welfare state to give to those who come in, nor a welfare state to encourage some of our people not to do the job that they ought to be doing, I think there would be a lot more opportunity and a lot more resistance to people coming in and working. I mean, nobody worries that much about Canadians coming back and forth all the time. Matter of fact, their dollar's growing, so maybe we'll be going up there for all we know. No, they come back and forth, but in, in the South, there's more resentment, and there's a bigger problem down there, because the economy is so weak in Mexico. I have, for instance, been working with a group in, in the parliament, in the legislature in Mexico, that they are so sick and tired of their middle class getting wiped out by runaway inflation, because once the peso goes down, everybody loses their savings. And they used to be on a silver standard, and there's a group down there now working very hard to allow a parallel standard, which is what I advise here, to allow the Mexican citizens to be on a silver standard, which would be a way of preserving wealth in that country. Something like that would help a whole lot, but there would still be a lot of need for people coming back and forth, and there should be an ability for us to accept that. But it should be designed not where people feel threatened and hurt, but I, I connect this with the welfare state. Both it affects us here, affects, you know, when the illegal aliens come over, as well as the welfare state in Mexico. So many of these problems could be solved very easily with sound economic policies.
Again, again, we have an overflow crowd here in the studio, so, sir, go ahead, please.
Dr. Paul, my question is about the consolidation of the mass media in this country, how five companies pretty much own all of our information and what we could hear. And I, my question is, what do you think about the mass media situation and...
Can't hear you. I need it louder. Put the mic up a little higher.
Basically, the media in our country is controlled by five companies, and they're not telling us everything that's going on. It's very controlled. I was just wondering what you thought about that, like being, you know, you're not allowed at the debates tonight, and what do you think, if you become President, what can you do to make sure that the media gets divided?
Okay.
Thank you.
He asked, he asked about, "What would I do as President to alter the conditions that we have?" He indicated about five strong media companies have so much control, and what would we do to get something more fair and balanced? Since I'm not, I'm not supportive of using, using force to get my way, I'd be very careful on what I would, I would do. But the strength of these media companies doesn't come automatically from free market capitalism. You know, everything in radio and television has been licenses, you know, granted, and there's a lot of conditions. So, long-term, we shouldn't have that, that condition. But fortunately, you know, we have some competition. There are alternative sources that we can compete with. We happen to have this forum, which is competitive with those others who are less fair and balanced. And, and, and this is also, today we have more competition, we have a political equalizer in the use of the Internet. I mean, right now, the Internet is fantastic in getting information out. So I'm much more interested in using alternatives and maximizing and make sure there are no government regulations that will suppress it. My threat is, and my concern is, that there'll be a threat the federal government is going to want to come in and regulate the Internet as well, and have some type of licensing program that will, you know, limit the scope and the ability for every individual to make use of the Internet. But all, one thing that should be done and looked at, but it would be, it would be a big task, is getting away through this licensing procedure and back to a private property ownership. But you still would have the threat of that. But ultimately, you know, the media is a reflection of, of an attitude of the country. They say that, for instance, most people who talk about economics superficially on the media talk from a Keynesian viewpoint. They don't talk from an Austrian free-market viewpoint. So you don't mandate things to say, "You can't talk about this type of economics, you have to talk about this." What you have to do, that's an educational process, and that's where I'm optimistic about what's happening in the country, though we have a lot of problems in Washington. This country is waking up to economics. Just think of how interested the people are now, just during this campaign, how they're interested in monetary policy. So it's competition in ideas, so that we can raise up a new generation of individuals who will be running for Congress, new people that will be in, in, in radio and television and journalism. And then those views, I don't see the five majors as, as threatening as it might seem at times. I don't see them as, as much threat that they have total control. I think ideas are much more important, and that's why we have to work not only in the area of politics, but we also have to work in the area of raising our young people up to understand why free-market principles are the only way we can take care of people. If we care about our fellow man, and we care about poverty, we care about education and medical care, then we have to approach this through the ideas of what we hold, hold dear, and we can solve most of those problems.
We have, we have just about two minutes left. One of the, another subject related to the previous question is the subject of campaign finance reform. Would you comment on, on that, please?
Okay. Campaign finance reform is something we should move very cautiously with, because if, if you want to control how people spend their money or how they lobby Congress, you might restrict somebody's civil rights or constitutional rights, because the Constitution is very clear that people have the right to petition the government. So when you see the abuse in Washington of the special interests and the controls that they have, you say, "Boy, let's keep them out. They shouldn't be able to lobby, they can't do this or that." That, that really isn't a solution. The ultimate solution is never having a system of government that is so big that they have so much control over our lives and so much power, and they control our money. No wonder the special interests go there, because they, they want to either get their money back or control, and control the government. Now, there's one proposal that I made recently that is worth thinking about, and that is, if, if the special interests have so much control of the federal government, and we don't want to ever abuse your right to petition the government, what about the big companies? What about the military-industrial complex? These medical companies, the drug companies that come, spend millions and millions of dollars lobbying? Shouldn't we restrain them? And I'm thinking that one way we might be able to restrain them, whether it's in their lobbying efforts or the way they campaign, and that is, to make them, if they take a contract from the government, they no longer can lobby and push the Congress around because they're making money off of the government.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight, Dr. Paul. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, thank you, as well as our viewers. For more information about the campaign and to join the campaign, ronpaul2008.com, or you can call the toll-free number on the screen. Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, you did great.
Thank you, thank you.
You did very well. Yeah, we'll do that. Okay. Very good. Thank you for coming. Okay, sure.